Okay, it's 4:30, so we're gonna call the Board of Education meeting to order. And the first item up is approval of the agenda. Everybody has their computers up. Does there anything need to be added or changed here?
So move us chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. You'll open the minutes for approval. You'll see there's four sets attached, which are just September 30th and then the, I think that's a special call meeting that we just had on the 13th. So hopefully you've had a chance to look over those.
And I'll recede myself from the one I wasn't here.
As will I.
Me too.
Yeah.
Myself on the 13th.
Yeah, I think it was Ms. Booth, myself, Mike, and Mac.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I might need a motion for one of those to approve those minutes.
So move us chair.
Okay, we'll hear a second.
Are you, is this on the 13th?
Well, no, we can do a mic.
Oh, okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. That carries into no action items. And the first item is a presentation from, I'm assuming, Mr. Cole, Southside High School. Or whoever's gonna help him. I saw he brought some help there, I didn't know what he was gonna have to do. Yeah, we don't have it attached, so we need to look behind this, don't we?
I don't have it attached.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to see us tonight. I'm just gonna kinda do a general overview of a presentation that will actually be given by my two school counselors, Ms. Megan Jernigan and Ms. Zuberbeer. We at Southside and at all of our high schools, our goal is to graduate 100% of our students college and career ready. Obviously, that's a huge goal, and it requires a lot of work. Particularly at our school, just in talking to our parents and students over the last couple of years, we determined that we needed to do a lot more in the area of support for our students if we wanted to make that goal a reality. We felt like our teachers were working really hard in their content areas. Our students wanted to achieve this goal, our parents wanted it for their students. And so really what we had to do was find what are the areas outside of just the teaching and learning where our students need the support? And try to put something in place to provide those things. In looking around, I found the new counseling program that was being put in place at East Carolina University, and I was able to investigate exactly what they were training our counselors these days to do. And it was quite a bit different than what I think counselors were trained to do 20 years ago, when I was in high school. And so I was looking for a rubric, some kinda guideline to follow, and I came across the ramped up program, which is a national certification that was put together by the American Association of School Counselors, which also happens to be the professional group that East Carolina University partners with to create their counseling program. And so I spoke to Ms. Jernigan about it, and at the time, she was my one counselor. And we decided that this was something that our school needed and we wanted to shoot for, was to get this recognition for our counseling program. Number one, just to show the work that we were putting in place, but also, it helped me to have a guideline for what exactly a high-quality counseling program looks like in the 21st century. Because I'll have to be honest, as a teacher in the classroom, I didn't see a lot of what the counselors were doing. And even as a principal, you know, we get wrapped up in our own silo and we don't see everything that can take place with a counselor. So it really helped me to modify my expectations. We've embarked on that process this year, and already I'm excited by the progress that we've made. One of the things was putting together an advisory council, which includes one of our board members, Mr. Terry Williams, as well as some parents and students. So we wanna get feedback from everyone involved about how we can improve our counseling program and better support our students in the goal of everyone graduating college and career ready. So at this time, I'm gonna turn things over to my counselors, and they have a short PowerPoint they're gonna go through and just kind of explain things to the board. And certainly, you'll have an opportunity to ask any questions of us that you may have in the end.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are here today to present the American School Counsel Association model and how we plan to become a recognized program by 2017. Being a member of the American School Counsel Association provides various resources to help school counselors work successfully with students, align student standards, and help create a positive school environment. The ASCA model is composed of four components. It's the foundation, delivery, management, and accountability. Foundation is the first component of the ASCA model. In the spring of 2015, students at Southside took a needs-based assessment. Just before school started back in the fall, we analyzed academic data, discipline records, and college readiness measures. From there, we were able to develop the foundation for our 2015-16 school council program. Delivery is the next component of the ASCA model. Delivery is presented in various ways, including direct and indirect services. For example, we developed a school counseling core curriculum that is delivered through the advisory period by teachers. We also deliver components of the delivery through individual and small group counseling and responsive services. The third component is management. We met with our principal, Mr. Cole, at the beginning of the year to meet for the annual agreement, which outlined the plans for the school year. We keep a daily use of time analysis sheet, a weekly calendar, and an annual calendar. We formed an advisory council to support our school counseling program. We met once in the fall and will meet once again in the spring. The use of data continues to build curriculum, small groups, and action plans. The final component to the ASCA model is accountability. In order to become a recognized program, we need to have accountability on what we do every day. Since the beginning of the school year, we've given a suicide screening, an at-risk survey, and have recently submitted or sent out a college and career readiness survey to our students. By the end of the school year, we will measure the effectiveness of the school counseling program by giving the college and career readiness post-test, collect data through our advisory, and receive feedback from all our stakeholders. ASCA promotes school counseling excellence by providing a recognized ASCA model program available to all school counselors. Megan and I are planning to submit an application to become ramped up, or ramped up, school by next October of 2016. We're very excited for this to become a reality and believe as a team that we can make this happen. There are many benefits in becoming a ramped up school, and it is our hope to be the first in Beaufort County and become leaders amongst our fellow colleagues. In creating our foundation for the school counseling program, we developed a mission statement that addresses our belief that all students can succeed in high school and beyond. During advisory, our teachers will implement the school counseling curriculum to help fulfill our mission. In addition to the mission statement, we created a vision statement as part of the foundation. We have a vision that all students will graduate college and career ready in order to be successful in the 21st century. We will collaborate with stakeholders in meeting the academic, social-emotional, and college-career readiness needs of all students, and provide them with academically, academic rigorous curriculum. Our advisory council consists of school staff, students, parents, and a board member and community members. The ASCA model requires at least two meetings throughout the school year to address the school counseling program as a whole. Data from the previous year indicated that our students were showing a need to increase their overall college and career readiness. Some steps in students reaching the college-going readiness includes searching and comparing college majors, selecting colleges based on their identified needs, providing all seniors with assistance in applying and getting financial aid for college. To reach our academic goal of increasing student achievement, we have implemented advisory every day. Our students can receive tutoring from their academic teachers, and also through advisory, we'll have the teachers present lessons on how to increase academic success by doing study skills and test-taking skills. We focus our social and emotional goal on decreasing the number of discipline assignments by second semester. We believe by implementing a peer mediation program, running small groups that focus on making healthy choices, and promoting a positive school environment will help us in attaining that goal. And finally, ASCA requires schools to have a closing the gap goal, and our data showed a low number of African-American students enrolled in college prep courses. In order to reach this goal, we believe meeting with these students on how these courses will better prepare them for college, and making their parents also knowledgeable in how it can benefit their student in the long run. This is a snapshot of our annual calendar. It includes advisory activities and small group counseling and events held by the school counselors. In October, we focused on things such as anti-bullying and underage drinking initiatives, senior seminar, which we collaborated with our media center coordinator on using social media to get accepted into college, cleaning it up, and what colleges look for. Meeting with first-generation college students. Other events coming up this semester include college application week, juniors identifying college majors that offer their interest, identifying colleges that offer their interested majors, financial aid night, career fair, and sophomores taking interest inventories. We also post our monthly calendar to the school's website. We wanted to share with you what teachers and students are saying about the advisory period. And this link will actually go to the Southside School Counseling Twitter account, and that's where these videos are posted.
It's damn.
A quiet school down.
I know. They have really quiet voices.
Just restart it.
I think it has to be.
Just restart it.
Restart the video. I think it ended.
Oh, did it?
Yeah. See what happens?
Is that working?
Scroll down a little bit.
If I don't see an arrow to click on.
Well, they're there if you wanna look at it. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to present Southside High School's school counseling program, and we're open for any questions or feedback you might have.
So anybody have any questions for these fine folks?
You said, "I am..."
Sure, good.
Post-program, post-testing.
Perception of this test.
Give me some more information.
So we gave the students a college and career readiness survey, and we wanted to see how many students feel like they're prepared for college or a career. And then, so it asks about study skills. Do you have good study habits on a scale from 1 to 5?
And you're just asking.
Just asking basic questions of, do you have a plan for after high school? If so, what are they? Are you planning on going to a four-year college? If not, are you going to a career? If you're not gonna do that, are you gonna go into the military, and what branch of the military are you planning on enlisting?
And then at the end, you can ask those questions again. So essentially, you're trying to measure the difference that you've made during the year on whether they have a plan or not.
But that could just be how they feel that day.
It could, and that's perception data. We use perception data, but we also use other data too. So we'll measure the activities completed through like CFNC.org and through their Big Futures account, and we can track what they're doing in those activities to see how prepared they're becoming for college.
Okay, we're doing all that tracking and all. Is there something that will give them incentive to want to do this and expose them to activities that may give them, "Oh, I can do this."
Right, and that's how we're trying to do it, through advisory, and have, every Friday is geared towards our counseling curriculum with the teachers. So they're gonna be doing those activities that are focused around college and career readiness. And by providing, we have college reps that will come to our lunches, and we're trying to increase that so students can see that it is possible for them. They just need to know how they can get there.
Advisory is a huge part of our counseling program. Every student at our school, they're organized into groups by grade level, and they're assigned to one teacher, and they'll have that same teacher for four years. And they have a program that they go through every Friday that's created by the counselors that's grade-level specific. And then the other days of the week, a lot of it's just relationship building. So it's one teacher and basically 15, 16 students. And they're going through and building relationships with those kids and having conversations like that about what their plans are for the future. Because a lot of our kids, they don't have anyone at home that's ever been to college. So they don't have anyone that can help them have those conversations. So what we have is a build and fill with people that have been to college. So if we can get them with a group of kids where it's not, they don't feel like they're being pushed to teach their content, that this 25 minutes is about your future. That's what a lot of us base.
Anyone else? I just, I was, you know, able to attend the first advisory council meeting. I appreciate being invited to that, as I said that day, because it was a lot of, you know, what do counselors, you know, actually, what are their daily activities? I know that was, probably came off kinda funny, being a board member, I don't, didn't know what counselors maybe do on a day-to-day basis, but the truth is the truth.
I think so much of us behind closed doors, sometimes we wonder, "What are they doing there?"
You don't know, you don't know, you have to ask. So I was glad to be there. And there were a number of students involved with the meeting as well, and I noticed there's a lot of engaging students, I mean, that's what this is about, is engaging students. And the things that they said and the plans that they have, I was thinking back in my days, comparing it to me, I was probably pretty far along in life before I was coming up with the plans that they were coming up with in high school. So you're making a difference already, whether it seems like, maybe it might be early in the program, but it was obvious there's changes already occurring. Maybe I was just behind my times, I don't know, probably. But it's gotta be a great thing, it's gotta work down the road even better, so I appreciate the effort you're putting into it.
Thanks.
I'm sure the board does. So thanks very much. Okay, that's gonna carry us over to our second item in the no action, and that would be transportation information from Director Jerry Win. And we have a handout that was at our seat, is that what you want us to be looking at? And something online as well? Is this the same thing? Oh, okay. I might look on that kind of seat on the screen.
You have a hard copy option here. Just in case you guys wanted to make any notes.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for giving me this opportunity to explain some things to you, but this is a procedural, or transportation brief primarily concerning our costs and procedural things that I think we can do that may help us in that category. If you look at our funding, where we get our money from, it is truly an annual comparison from year to year, and all the LEAs in the state compared to us. And each year, that goes up and down. It takes the overall cost of our transportation system versus the number of buses that Beaufort County uses to transport X number of students. This year, we transported during our annual head count, 4,332, 4,332 students in a given day. And then time, the time the buses are on the road, the driver's salary, fuel costs. And our standard stop time is pretty much 15 to 25 seconds, and all of that stuff measures in. A snapshot, if you're on like, I guess, the third or fourth slide, this is just to give you a...
Jerry, I hate to stop you, give me that figure again, the transport, how many students...
We transported this year during our annual head count was 4,332.
Per day.
Per day.
Round trip, I mean?
Yes, right, two trips, that's it. So really, it's a little over 80, 600 trips a day, but 4,300 students a day. And that's actual head counts, I mean, that is verifiable, count the numbers and put them in, okay?
Okay.
In the next slide, there were two now, it's called the snapshot. We use 105 buses, and I had made this slide before we did our head count, but it's really 4,300 students. That's a ratio of approximately 40 students per bus. If you look at Nash Rocky Mount, they have whittled their buses down, I remember when Nash Rocky Mount used to be almost 300 buses. And Nash Rocky Mount now has cut theirs down to 145 buses. They transport a little over 10,000 students a day, and their ratio is 69 to 1, 69 students per bus, okay?
Is that, can you put 69?
Is that the norm, or is that just...
No, they're using multiple buses, staggered bills. Yeah, they're sharing buses. You can't put, on average, at least high school students, you can't, but what we're doing is just comparing the number of students transported versus the number of buses they're using to transport X number of students.
Did you have, though, any information on a school that was similar in size to us? I'd be curious.
Yes, I can get those numbers too.
I would just be curious if they, if they're more efficient or less efficient than us.
Carteret, Edchcombe County, Martin County, Craven County, I mean, all of those around us, and I'd have to get you the numbers exactly to share.
Yeah, and I'm just curious if, how we stack up compared to a school our size.
That's really determined by your funding budget. And right now, we're at about 91%. So that means the majority compared to all the LEAs, we're only 91% efficient, which is, as we get into the slide here, you'll see. This is our budget rating, the graph. As you can see, in '09, '10, we were right under 98% efficient. Went down, came back up, and since 2012, where it's been a slow decline now in our percentage. The percent of our rating determines the percent of our base funding that we are allocated, okay?
Say that again, please.
Our budget rating is a percentage. We are allowed that percentage of our funding base. What if, the next slide? If our funding base is $2,136,267, which I think it was last year, and we were 98% efficient last year, DPI would've gave us a block summer money for transportation of If we are at 90% efficient, we're only gonna get $1,922,000, which is a difference of $170,000, almost $171,000, okay? That's the difference in that budget rating and how important it is to you.
What establishes that budget rating?
They compare us to other LEAs in the county, in the state.
On efficiency, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Efficiency.
And the efficiency consists of the number of buses, the cost of your system, and the number of students you transport. So take Nash County, for example. Nash County is doing 150 buses and 10,000 students. Their ratio is 69, and I don't exactly know what their cost is. You take us, we've got 105 buses and 4,300 students, and then what are our costs, which is normally close to $2 million? So our funding is gonna be lower probably than Nash County, much lower. Once you get to 90%, the state cuts it off. That's as low as they'll let you fall as an LEA. So once you get to 90%, you're just, you can go on down to 85, 84, and they're gonna still give you 90% of your budget rating. So there is some saving grace that you know there's a bottom there, you know, you're not gonna just keep sinking, there's a bottom. We still good?
Well, where's the $170,000 the difference go to? Who gets that?
DPI keeps it.
And they say they don't have any money.
I don't know about them.
Okay, DPI keeps it, the state keeps it, DPI keeps it.
Well, I don't know.
I know DPI's what I'm saying, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure DPI...
The money comes to DPI from DPI to us.
DPI Transportation would probably keep it and apply it to other states that are more efficient, or other counties that are more efficient. It's a DPI Transportation fund. They can use it to shore up contingency funds, early college-high school reimbursement, regional schools. That money is dispersed within DPI Transportation for other things. It doesn't come to us, not in the form of our basic funding formula.
So your budget for next year, or your funding for next year is gonna be based on your performance this year?
That's right. Or a simulator. If I can show that we go in there and make changes right now in a simulator, and those changes are better than our model last year, then we get the better of the two.
And you're getting ready to tell us how we can do that, right?
If you go back to the slide you're looking at now?
Let me ask Lynn a quick question.
Okay.
So Lynn, when I look at the state initial allotment to us and aligned for transportation, is this the same budget he's talking about, or is there a different transportation budget?
That's what he's talking about.
So when I look at it for this year, what just came out, and it says $1,700,000, or $1,698, that's the money he's talking about?
Yes. Now, he will also receive an allotment in December.
December.
Right, there's a different money, right.
December, there's about 15% more.
More, kinda.
In December, they'll come to a...
Because I know it has to be to come back and make up some of these numbers I'm looking at on the screen. Right, that's why I wanted to know if it was the same money we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
The December is considered a few...
$1,698.
$1,681,000.
Oh, you got 81, okay, she sent me, said $1,698. Just decreased 17,000 while I was sitting here.
That does surprise me a lot.
Wait till the end of the meeting, Dom's gonna go down some more. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Now, the slide you're looking at now, the budget rate, you see the blue is the simulator, and the red is the model. The simulator, of course, is a computer model that we can put numbers in and we can manipulate the data based on what we project we're gonna do, if it's realistic. And the model is what we did last year. And you can see, most years, we've got the simulator funding issue to us, but last year, we had the model. And last year was because we had, therefore, wow, we were only transporting like 4,000 students, and then all of a sudden, the number jumped up to like 4,300. And now, again, this year, we're at 4,332, so that helped us, but this year, I don't think we're gonna get as much help from the model as much as we will from the simulator. The difference is $170,000, $171,000. And now, as I said at the beginning, this is a procedural thing where we can just do things, and non-synchronized bell times between schools. What that does is it isolates a fleet of buses and restricts sharing of buses. And that's important, because the more buses we have, especially here in the city of Washington, the better off we are to just keep them buses like a transit. They have to be moving all the time, and reduce the number of buses. Let's say if we were operating 40 buses here in the city of Washington, we could cut down to 30, you would lower your costs just because you won't have 40 buses running. And you would also lower the number of buses, which is one of those attributes that goes into your funding formula, the number of buses. Now, we get into schoolhouse things, which I can't, I can't, I'm not sure about those things, but I know how they affect transportation. Like holding buses in the AM until the arrival of all buses at school. Some schools have a policy that they're gonna hold all the buses with students on them until all the buses get there. Well, you know, it don't sound like much, and most time, it's a five-minute thing. But five minutes on 180 days over 105 buses add up.
Jerry, why, what's the benefit of holding? Why would they do that?
I know schools do that, because I've already actually had some complaints from people about that, so what's the reason again, like she was saying?
Well...
Your best educated guess.
I think there's several things for that. One is, it's time to make sure, it has to do with the breakfast program. Some schools do it because of the capacity of lunchroom and teachers to get on place that can monitor students in the cafeteria, in the lunchroom, or wherever it may go. You gotta have teachers there.
So you're saying that they're holding them on the bus, the buses sitting in the bus parking lot, until a particular time when the school is open for students?
That's right.
And there's staff on hand, or the cafeteria is open for those going through for breakfast?
And my answer is, bring the buses later. You know, I mean, we can fix that a couple of ways. We can either get the teachers there earlier, or we can bring the buses later. Doesn't matter, as long as we don't, when drivers are sitting on buses, they're being paid essentially to watch... Doesn't matter, as long as we don't, when, when drivers are sitting on buses, they're being paid essentially to, to watch over the students. And drivers should be paid to drive.
Okay, and how, my next question would be, when you don't really give us a time, are they holding them for ten minutes, forty minutes? How much, when you say we're paying drivers, how much are we talking about it costing us?
As we go through this slide here in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carolyn, I think you'll get an answer to that.
Okay.
How many schools doing it now?
Pardon me?
How many schools is holding the kids on the bus?
Well, probably if you count AM and RPM, I would probably say all of them.
We have a principal here, are you holding kids?
You shouldn't have laughed that loud. I will speak for Southside.
That's all I want you to, no, that's all.
We allow our students to come in the building at eight-oh-eight. We encourage our drivers to not get there until eight-oh-eight. Preferably, we want them to arrive sometime between eight-oh-eight and eight-fifteen. That allows the students to get off the bus, come in, they still have fifteen minutes to eat breakfast, which is plenty of time. And then the bell rings for them to go to class.
What time does the first bell ring for them to go to class?
The bell rings for them to go to class at eight-twenty-six. And then, class starts actually at eight-thirty-two, I believe. And so they have, they have that time. Sometimes drivers, you know, it's, it's, it's not as easy as it sounds to, for a driver to get there in that window of time, because sometimes, things happen. You know, you'll have a day where fifteen kids don't ride the bus that normally ride. And so when you're not stopping at those stops, I mean, that knocks time off of your route, and they get there. They get there early. And so we wanna make sure at the high school level, particularly, that we have people at their duty stations when the kids come in, because, you know, we, that's a lot of free time. And high school students get in trouble when you have a lot of free time. So, you know, we wanna have people stationed at bathrooms, we wanna have people stationed at the cafeteria and stuff, and so.
Sure.
And, and I think it's, it can be a little unfair and unreasonable for us to keep bumping the time up that a staff member should be there because a bus happens to be running early.
Right.
What would you say is the norm?
I would say.
For you, for the high, for Southside?
For our buses? That's hard for me. My duty station is that, Ms. Winley is our bus coordinator, she's always at the buses. But I would say in general, I think our bus drivers do a pretty good job. They have in the last couple of years of getting there around eight-oh-eight. And of course, you know, the first week or two of school is different. The first week or two of every semester is a little different. I think football season ends, typically, that's fifty kids that start riding the buses in one day, and that kinda has to work out. So I mean, there are some variables that, that you have to work out. But I know that we address our bus drivers when they've been arriving to school too early.
Do you share buses with anybody?
No, ma'am. We're kinda locked, our schedule is kinda locked in because we share buses with the early college and the alternative school. They have a, a long ride from our school to the, to the alternative school and the, and the early college, and they have to start by a certain time to get their instructional hours. So we, we really don't have a lot of flexibility on when we start and leave, unless those two schools got their own buses, which I doubt. Maybe that will happen one day.
Okay, we'll let you go ahead, maybe you'll answer these questions for us.
Yeah, I got some.
No, we'll ask you.
I got all, I got all those questions in this slide.
Yeah, we'll get, when you get to the end, we'll ask you all the questions, because you may, you may answer most of them for us as we go.
Ask away, I think it's great. Okay, holding buses in the AM, staggered PM dismissal times within a school. Meaning, some schools will start a dismissal at three-ten for the final bell to ring at three-thirty. That's a twenty-minute dismissal where a bus and a student sit, a student, a bus driver and a student will be sitting on a bus from three-oh-five or three-ten, you know, waiting. You know, they let one grade level go, another grade level go, another grade level go. Dual employees placed on longer routes. I mean, we have dual employees, they should be the ones driving the smaller routes, the quick routes. Use of yellow buses for activity trips. You know, a trip is a trip, but the problem is that mileage we use for that yellow bus counts against us in our funding formula. So we shouldn't be using yellow buses for nothing, the yellow bus to and from school activities. Transfer of students out of the school district, I know a lot of times that's out of our control, but that is a very expensive measure. Lending number of buses shared between schools, I mean, you know, every school that we can share, and I mean CMS, CPS, Bath in Northeast, Northeast and Northside, all the city schools, all five. If, if these things are staggered properly, you can just share buses and cut down the number of buses. Operation of county-wide academies, regional schools. Of course, most of the time, the regional school money is refunded to us. Community stops are not fully utilized. We need to go to community stops, and we need to let that be the community stop for all students in the neighborhood, because it lets everyone know where the stop is year in, year out. It also lets parents know where the stop is for security purposes, and a driver can go and pick up students and move on. Two-tenths of a mile stop location, we do or do not, sometimes, we're very, we're very lax on that requirement. A half-mile deviation and return to a regular route, that means there's a policy that says a bus can't deviate for less than a half a mile from its original route and return, except for ten or more students. And we're, because we got a river down the center, you know, we're very slack on that too, and I'm not even proposing that we start doing that. But these are all things that add up to our costs.
What's that, what's that mean again?
Let's say you live down Swan Point, and it's only a half a mile, and there's two students down there. The policy states that a bus can't deviate from its original path of travel and return back to its original path of travel, except for groups of ten or more students.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
That's a state policy.
DPI, I think. Daycares, daycares are two-sided for us. You know, in the afternoon, you can take a bus load and go drop them off, but in the morning, you don't have that ridership. So you have to plan on a bus. It's the use of a bus, it's the use of a half a bus. Sitting in drive-through lines at daycares. I fully believe that a bus should not be required to pull through daycare lines to drop off students sitting in regular car traffic. You know, moms wanna go in there and take their kids in, and a bus is sitting in that drive-through line, and that is time-consuming, time is money.
Is that a regular car?
Yeah, would you do that?
You do that on a?
Yes, sir, regular, daily, two times.
To the degree of what, how many would you say, how many buses are caught up?
Probably got, probably three to five buses that I know of. I mean, I know we do it at Carroll World. Most of them, we got them at the where we're doing them at the stops, at the side, at the curb. I try and do them at the curbs, but Carroll World, of course, is one of them that they want the students dropped off at the door. We just went through it with Bouncing House, we finally moved that out to the, to the curb. I try and get them to the curb, but then the daycare owners, and with some privates too, they want, they can't be to the curb to escort the students in. And mostly, what we're talking about here is very young, very young students. So, but, I mean, I saw a video last year of a driver sitting in the daycare line, waiting for a tractor-trailer unloading food for the daycare, so we, we just sat there, and it's blocked in. Small parking lots, I mean, it's just, I don't think there's any other county in the state that does that. Maybe, I don't know, but not that I know of.
Okay.
Have you met with these daycare owners to try to change? I mean, I'm sure you have, but I mean, have you made several attempts to try to change that, or? And they're not willing to compromise, even though we're transporting their students?
It's above my head.
I understand.
Whose head does it stop at?
Probably yours.
Yours.
All right, then, we'll work on it. I have no problem with that.
I mean, honestly, I have talked and discussed and done, done things like this, and, you know, it's, it can't be, you're talking about a business here that's had this service for a while, and there's, there's others too, it's not just one. And once you start something, it just starts growing to other places.
And you can't do it for one if you're not doing it for all. But the one thing that we all agree on, I'm sure, is the safety of those children comes first.
And that's, that's the argument, is it a safety factor for a kid to walk from the curb to a daycare door with cars coming in between?
Right, we wouldn't want that.
So, or should someone be out there, should they provide a stop around the traffic, or? I mean, there's all ways to look at it, but.
There's, there's gotta be a compromise.
Another thing is cancellation of school programs and daycare programs. I mean, a, a school daycare may say, hey, we're counseling today. You know, they'll call you the day of and tell the schoolhouse that so-and-so program isn't running today, and then we gotta make arrangements for the transportation. Above what normal, and same thing with after-school programs. After-school programs operate Monday through Thursday PM. Monday through Thursday PM, there's ten people on a bus. And then when you get to Friday afternoon, the bus is back at capacity. Commercial sites sponsoring PM daycare, Bouncing House is one of them. Bouncing House called and said that, you know, they're now running an after-school program, and they wanted us to stop. Well, we're stopping at other after-school programs, so, you know, you have to consider it. And, you know, we don't like stopping at commercial stops, period. We have requests to go through Walmart, we have requests to go through all these commercial places, and we decline them. We say, no, we're not going through there. And we don't drop the kid off at the curb at Walmart, it's too dangerous, they have to arrange other stops. Northside AM data. This slide provides you a look, this is an average day, it's not an average of days, it's one-day snapshot. The blue column is the first stop on that bus. That's the time each bus made its first stop for that particular day. The red line is the time the bus arrived at school. Okay? Now, as you notice, those two lines come together to the right, that's forming like a cone. That is perfect, because you take those buses that operate from seven-sixteen to eight-oh-five, that's a route that I can do double sharing with, quick and easy. I mean, the routes are thirty, forty minutes long. And if you see the times, you can see how that arrival time for those buses that particular day is awesome. It's, eight-oh-one to eight-oh-six, that's a five-minute arrival time for the buses at Northside.
What's that target time, Jerry?
We like to keep it within five minutes.
But I mean, we said with Dale, it was eight-oh-eight. I see the bell time at Northside is eight-twenty-five, what time are we trying to get buses on campus at Northside?
That's school determined. That's why I try and record, I, I got up here to bell time, and a part of this slide here is to give you three points of reference. The first stop on that bus, the time the bus got to school, and what we consider, what we've been given as a bell time for that bus.
Well, I mean, I think, bell time, what you mean is the bell to go to class.
That's bell time when I call the school and ask you what time do you ring the bell for the buses to be there.
The buses to be there for the kids to go to class.
That, and that's, that in itself is the issue, because I do not know what a bell time is.
Well, you gotta have time for breakfast.
That's right.
If eight-twenty-five is the time the bell rings to leave breakfast and go to class, I mean, ours is eight-twenty-six. That makes sense.
Then you gotta have them there.
Eight-twenty-five for arrival, that's a difference.
No, it's, it's a bell time, it's what time breakfast is over and school begins. That's eight-twenty-five for Northside, and I think I'm probably right.
So the first student?
So the gap gives them time.
The first student that is picked up on bus one-twenty-two stays on the bus an hour and thirteen minutes? One way?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are they?
That's probably Grass Ridge Road, Ponza.
Coming out of High County.
Yeah.
The whole bus probably won't have twenty kids on it when it comes in. Actually, I think it's got twelve students on it.
We have no choice, but that doesn't sound efficient.
Choice on that bus. But see, when them buses get down to that low end where it's seven-twenty-two to eight-oh-two, we have choices in there. That's buses we have choices with. So, if you were to look at.
When you say you have choices, what, what are you, you, bringing kids to school, then dropping them off, and then making another run?
Yes, sir.
Or you're gonna combine that run?
Well, that's, combining is another issue, but it is an option. But what I'm thinking right now is just sharing buses. If we can get buses, let's say, if Northside buses and Northeast buses were to be shared, that's going in and out of Bell Haven, that's probably three busloads of students. We could do express runs, shorten each one of those routes, pick them up, bring them in, go back and get other students.
Providing they're allowed to get off the bus early.
Yes, but most of the time, schools, when schools know double-run buses, and truly, schools do work with getting those buses in and out quickly. So, if you were to look at this and you're considering, I did high school, all the three high schools, because if you're considering changing high school bell times, this right here gives you a good thing to reference. If you're gonna say, start the school, if the bell time's gonna be at seven-thirty, or let's say, seven-twenty-five, then you have to move these stops up exactly over how much you move up that bell time. Okay, that's proportion.
Right.
All right? This is Southside's bell time, or data, for that particular day. We still got the cone shape coming down. Bus two-seventy-one, that bus got there early, it could just, this is a one-day snapshot. It doesn't mean that this is an average, but, you know, let's say if it is an average. If that bus is leaving, picking up its first stop at seven-oh-one and getting there at seven-fifty-four, then even getting there at eight-oh-eight, that's why, fourteen minutes early, so that bus could've really made its first stop at about seven-fifteen. So you see how you can play with this graph to get what ifs out of it?
Sure.
And then he's got the curve coming down from seven-thirty-three to eight-fourteen, and the closer those two, the closer the student first pickup and the school arrival time is, the more options we have with those buses. And this particular bus here, seven-four, seven-fifty-four, that's a twenty, what, a twenty-seven minute window that those buses arrived. And I don't know what day it was, we just took a snapshot of data.
So you don't really know if that's a normal?
No, I don't know if that's a normal. The bus could've been running late, but just exclude the high and the low. Eight-oh-two to eight-sixteen, you're getting rid of the high and the low, and you're still looking at a fourteen-minute window.
I'm actually surprised that they're that consistent, because we've had a work zone on Highway thirty-three, I think.
That's true.
Right, no.
I mean, it's, it's been tough this year, it has, because it been a little where they were on thirty-three made a big difference on our buses.
You travel, don't you? Okay.
And, and we can provide this data for you pretty randomly now, or pretty easy if you want it.
How are you gathering this?
GPS. This is all GPS time.
Okay.
And you know how full or empty each bus is as well, right?
No, I, I have to do that through a different way. What we would probably do is look at our annual student head count, which was verified by the bus driver. And we have that data too, we just got that data in a couple of weeks ago. We're in the process right now of doing everything we can to get our numbers into DPI, where we can calculate our annual budget rating for this year. That will probably come out sometime in November, middle of November. There's Southside. Here is Washington, this is Washington's high school.
It looks like a cone as well.
It is.
So, is our efficiency not at the high school level, but at the other level, pretty much?
No, it's the same at all of them. All I do, I wanted to kill two birds with one stone with these slides, because I know there's some talk about moving high schools. Just get the three high schools, so you could look at everything from moving bell times to sharing buses to the efficiency and the time that they arrive and show up.
And every high school seems to have one or two buses that kids are on there over an hour.
Well, I think, I, I'm not sure about the current Bedford County School goal right now, but it's always been seventy-five minutes. That's an hour and fifteen minutes, and that's pretty much what we go by.
You got one bus at Washington that's done in twenty minutes.
Yes, sir.
How many kids on that bus?
Probably loaded.
But yet, the bus with the longest route is probably got the least students on it, just because you're running out of time.
Yes, sir.
Jerry, is that, is that bus with the short run running another route for another school?
Yes, sir. If anything's running that close together, we're already double routing that bus.
Right, okay.
Bus one-twenty, uh, what is the asterix, I believe that's double run. See the asterix at the top?
Okay.
That's double run buses.
Where's bus one-eighty-three coming from? That's a long time, or that was a snapshot, maybe it was just running late, but I mean, from six-thirty-nine to eight-oh-three, that's almost an hour and a half. Where in Washington would that take that long to do that route?
Beargrass Road, Horse Pen Swamp Road, Robertsonville Road.
My neck of the woods now.
As Washington versus.
Time to get to Washington.
Washington's school district is really much bigger than you think it is when you start looking at it.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking it's not as big as some of the, like, I know you're going to almost Vega Road to get students, right?
Well, I mean, I was bus coordinator at Washington High School. Well, I mean, I was bus coordinator at Washington High School for three years. And, and I can tell you that the buses that go down town, they are jam-packed, and they made probably four corner stops, community stops, and, and they're back.
And, and we tried to pick them-
The ones that are the longer routes, they're going out of Barra Grass Road, they're, they're going out to those areas, and they have the least number of students, because they're much more like our buses, the Southside. They're rural areas, and so you run into the problem, you're trying to meet the hour and 15 minutes, but they live so far out and so far apart, it's hard to hack the bus, because you'd be driving three hours.
Right.
So, not to try to rush you, but I think we get what you're saying some of the issues are. So what is it you're wanting us to think about?
Types of calls, scheduling calls, accepted calls. These are things that I think we accept because of our geographical factors. Example of wait times. This is Dwell Reports. This, I want to go over this, because this one shows a lot of-
No, no, I mean, I was just, I know it's leading up to something.
That blue line? Okay, that, it is money. It always leads up to money. Uh, that blue line is the, the time that each driver set, from the time they checked in to the time they pulled off that school campus. The blue line is the AM. As you notice, each one of them is approximately 10 minutes, right? That's for a pre-trip inspection, getting the bus ready, whatever you want to do. The red line is the time the driver sat on the bus in the PM, from the time they clocked in to the time they drove off campus. So you see, that's, and then if you look at the green line, which is the total of the, each bus, you're looking 30 minutes a day, non-driving time, where a bus is just sitting in a parking lot, for various reasons.
Jerry, we can control when, we know when the bus, when the bell rings in the afternoon. So, w- wouldn't that be an easy fix of not having the driver arrive as early on school campus? Because the bell's gonna ring every day at 3:25 or whatever it rings.
No, that's, that's not a case of the driver arriving. Northeast has like a three, three staggered bell time release. So the bus driver has to be on the bus when the first student gets there. And then after that, like, three minutes later, there's another bell release, and then three minutes later, there's another bell release. And then, you know, time you add it up and get all the kids on, you're looking at 20 minutes sitting there. Or maybe 15 minutes, and maybe the driver just got there five minutes early.
Is the purpose of the staggered release to separate elementary from middle school? Or is it, I, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to wrap myself around why. I know, uh, they're not the only school that has different dismissal times, but what would be the purpose of having, do the, at Northeast, do your elementary students ride with your middle school students?
All schools in the county or K.A., with the exception of Washington City Schools.
Right.
And, I mean, we have it in, in the county, and we have it in the city, so I think it's just a matter of letting enough out at a time so you can manage it, or letting smaller kids out ahead or younger kids. It's probably a combination.
You're clearing sections of that building and hallway to let the other ones come through too, rather than having just a mass exodus at one time.
And this has become a common practice in most of our schools now. So it does take, and it may not be fixable, it's just, these are, could be an acceptable cost that we have to live with, and understand what's coming from it.
It's a difficult job.
Pardon me?
It's a difficult job, what you're doing.
It is. Just that example that I just showed you right there, you know, total savings is $5,000 for that one school per year. You factored that into other schools, and that was just-
Multiplies overnight.
Yeah, it multiplies overnight. Reimbursement programs. These are very sensitive programs to Botha County Schools Transportation. These are money that we collect from Title I federal programs for the students that we transport based on our annual mileage, annual head count. And if these programs ever stop contributing to transportation, like, if they say it's an in-house cost, or if they quit funding it, or whatever may be the cost, you're looking really at about $160,000 that's gonna go, poof, gone. And that's gonna be a severe impact.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Uh, non-reimbursed programs, homeless, EC, academies, recommendations, used community stops, half-mile deviation. Of course, I'm not a big fan of half-mile deviation. I am a big fan of standardized school bell schedules. I do believe that is a key start to starting our program to get us more ef, uh, more effective. Students released upon bus arrival. I believe that when the bus pulls in the parking lot, you know, we either got to get the buses coming late, it's a timing issue, we gotta do something, so when they get there, they can get off. Reduce, eliminate or reduce student dismissal times, you know, one-minute windows, has got to do something to clear out, so we can get the buses, uh, rolling. I don't believe we should be pulling through daycares. I think we should keep constantly searching for more conventional bus drivers, uh, and, and put our dual employees as substitute bus drivers. And I'll probably get a lot of calls about that statement tomorrow.
Why, why do you say that now?
Well, our dual employees are drawing overtime, both from the transportation side of the house. It's prorated. They don't just draw one overtime, but it's prorated from transportation and whatever department they are. If they are child nutrition, child nutrition pays the part for their time, transportation pays the part for our time. If they are teacher assistants, it costs the teacher assistant program more, and then transportation has to pay more to, to pony up for the overtime, which is a huge cost. So I, I, I think that dual employees should be our backup drivers, and that we should look for, uh, conventional bus drivers as hard as we can do. And of course, that's gonna tell some people now, and that's the hard part that we're in right now. You're gonna have to go to, to drivers and say, look, you're gonna lose your route. And that could be as much as $400, $800 a month. You just got to start over a gradual time where you don't take that funding from people.
Right. How many spare drivers do you have right now?
Well, if you look at our CDL testing bases, about 300. But if you actually get on the phone in the morning and call them, there's none.
I'm sorry, I know it's not three.
That's what I thought you were gonna say.
There's no way it's 300.
No.
And so.
No.
Subdriver, but listen, again, though, that's subdrivers. That's because if I'm a conventional driver and I want a job, I'm not gonna just sit here and wait for Botha County Schools to call me twice a week and go drive two hours. But if you come to me and say, hey, I'll give you a dri, a job to drive two hours every day, and then you take that dual employee and use them as your sub-driver, it would change the, the landscape of what we're doing.
Yeah, I can see that, okay.
Reassign dual employees to shorter routes. Oftentimes at our schools, our dual employees have the longest routes. Reduce driver lag time, stagger schools. I believe that PS Jones, John Small, Washington High School, any of these combinations can be staggered. Eastern Elementary and John Ca, John Cotton Taylor because of pre-K seats, which I'm trying to eliminate the use of, um, star seats, which is a, a seat we install manually that prevents other students from riding in that seat. I mean, we're ordering buses now with a different layout to get away from those seats. I believe that CPS, CMS can be shared. Northside and Northeast, I believe Bath and Northeast can be shared. I mean, if you want to go that way. I mean, those schools, if you put one going that way and drop off, and then put the other one coming back, I mean, it'll work. So I, I don't, other than probably Southside and Snowden, I would think they would be the two hardest schools to go to a shared system.
So am I right then in saying, and I think so, that everything's gonna really start with looking at bell times first?
I, I think so, Mr. Chair.
You know what my next question is? So who's gonna do that?
We've, we've proposed a couple of times, and we can certainly come back to it again. One of the principals' input and, and how that would affect a lot of other things in terms of drop off and pickup morning and afternoon to get some feedback, but-
Well, am I the only one that feels that 6:30 is too early for kids to be on the bus?
I don't think you are. And, and I'll say, because I remember the times it was proposed before, and that was the drawback. Everything, and I'm, I'm just, I wanna make sure I'm halfway right where I'm saying. Everything was moved up, meaning earlier. Is, am I gonna get in trouble for saying what's wrong with moving them the other way?
To 8:20, 8:30?
To in the afternoons.
Right.
Because we had bus, the ones that were presented to me, maybe it was twice, but I remember one time presented when I was here, we had pickups before 6:00 AM. That's just not going to work, I don't think.
And to stop it before 6:00.
You know, when, because you look at some of these bell times, I mean, pickup times, just the 30 minute was gonna put you into 5:00 AM, not 5:00 AM, but the later 5, 5:40, something like that, AM pickup. We can't expect kids out there like that. So, am I wrong then? And I know you said earlier you weren't the bell expert person, saying maybe that's done. I mean, is there a way, Don, to look at moving this the other way?
Yeah, we can tweak it in a lot of different directions.
The example I should've put up here too, but it was a middle school. PS Jones Middle School, for example. They take in at 7:45 in the morning, quarter to eight. Their buses arrive middle school at 7:20. And that's for a breakfast program. I mean, but we've got kids on campus at 7:20. And, you know, to me, that's just, that's early.
That's a long.
That's early for my day.
And you, and you do have to factor in the drivers, the, the drive kids and the drop-offs and all of that. I-
And breakfast programs. That's a some way to boot that breakfast program into 9 o'clock, where all kids are fed in the schoolhouse, versus fed before the schoolhouse.
See, I don't, yeah, and, and you're gonna have trouble with that, because I already know that we have schools because of having the number of lunches that they provide. We already have schools having lunch at, uh, 10:50.
10:50, that's right.
So I guess it would be, we could all combine it together and just have brunch.
Snack.
I mean, not, not really. I was joking, folks. Don't, don't say. But you see what I'm saying? We already got a, a 10:50 lunch, so you can't expect to have breakfast at 9:00.
Unless they eat at 1:00. I mean, they could, well, no, you're right, because somebody's gotta go first.
That's right, somebody's got to go first.
Oh.
Your larger schools are already doing three lunches and more.
Since you mentioned PS Jones, their bell time, why is it so early? Why is PS Jones' bell time so early?
Because according to PS Jones, 7:45 is normal, good.
Okay. Well, you, well, you already have schools at like 7:40 bell times to 8:30 bell times for the high school, and I realize you can't-
No, I think, I think, I think 7:45 is the earliest, and then there's some 7:50, 8 o'clock, 8:10, 8:25. 7:45 is probably five minutes earlier than some of the other ones.
But I'm saying, I was assuming that was for bell.
That those bell times were setting that early so you could share buses with other schools?
Oh, no, oh, no.
Mr. Chairman, this is all good information, and it's not gonna get resolved tonight.
Yep, so we gotta find a-
So I would like to charge the superintendent, the transportation director, to go ahead and handle this thing and-
Bring us back a recommendation. I think that's the way to go. You, I mean, you're gonna have to get your bell expert sitting next to me here and put your plan together, bring back to us what you want us to look at.
If it's not a good plan, we're gonna send it back.
All righty, thanks a lot. Doesn't sound like it's gonna be easy, though.
Nope.
Uh, budget discussion, so I think the conversation's getting better all the time.
I'm gonna pass two items around for you to take a look at. You've got them on your, on the computer, but I, I feel like I'll lose you if you get on the computer, if you can just kind of stick with me here. The first sheet, if you take a look at it, is, is the sheet that really deals with the local. And the reason we're doing this tonight, Lynn needs to have some feedback in finance for her to nail down what we're actually doing for the budget. Right now, we're working on an interim, and we have to do that until we know what the allotments look like and, and where we're at. Because we, as you all know, we start building a budget in January, February, before we know anything at the state level with regard to the allocation and the amounts that we're dealing with. When you look under the county request total on this, on the smaller white sheet that you have, there was a total budget request, this was to the commissioners on the local side, for 15, 16, when we went through our budget request year last year, uh, for about 14 and a half million dollars. Now, out of that 14 and a half million, you can subtract what we projected for fines and forfeitures and interest, and then our use of fund balance. So we went to the commissioners with a request of 13,571,000. Well, kind of as the dust has settled and we know what our results look like, you can look at the actual over on the column beside that. Where we were forecasting and projecting fines and forfeitures of just under 420,000, we actually came in at 326,000, which means that there's a deficit of almost 94,000 just in that one area. That's a source of revenue for us that we're counting on in budget. In interest, we're down about $3,000. And then we didn't get what we requested from the county on the local appropriation for current expense to the tune of $362,000. So when you add that together, the total shortage is, is right at 460,000. So you really have to add that to the 500,000 that we're already planning to use for fund balance, and we start to approach a million dollars. When you look at the column down at the bottom, Lynn's put together what the original, uh, amount for fund balance was gonna be, what our additional fund balance needed is, and then we've added in driver's ed, because we were counting on that not being there, because we didn't know, and that came back in our favor for one year. And then the, the, another line item here that was not on our radar at all, that we didn't know this was gonna happen, was a $750 bonus for all of our, uh, employees. That, if, if you look at what we have at the current time, that would cost us about 135,000. Our goal there is to try to move as many personnel, uh, folk, people onto the state side, to let the state pick up that bonus, so we don't have to pay it out of local. But there's certainly a financial liability there that we've got to deal with. Some additional cuts at the state level, the North Carolina Virtual Public School deduction that we have to have, and then some increased funding to get us back to a level where we were. This was what was in the original budget that was approved for technology. What all that means is that if other things don't change, then we're looking at hitting fund balance to the tune of 1.3 million dollars. And what Lynn needs to know is, and I hate to say the level of comfort, but what's your level of comfort in terms of what we want to target with regard to fund balance? Because if it's 1.1, or if it's 900,000, or whatever that number is, we've got to go back in on the local side and see what we can do to, to trim even deeper than what we've done already.
So this $750 bonus, the state is not providing any funds for that?
They don't do it for the people that are paid out of the locals.
And so that's just the local people?
Yes, that's right.
People that we pay, which?
And do we know who those are?
Um, we've got teachers assistants, we've got teachers, we've got, um-
So the $750 is for, is for every single employee?
Every single employee, full-time employee that we pay, and, and if they're below full-time, it, if they get, it's prorated, so, yeah.
Is that even salary?
Yeah, every single quality person, yeah.
So you kind of got that, you can take a look at.
Yeah?
Okay, good. The other sheet that, that Lynn has put together is a state allocation. And I even hate to get into this, because there's so many different facets of this that you can look at, and people can make a lot of statements, and they're, for the most part, I think, most are telling the truth, but the meaning is very different. And a great example, if, if you look all the way to the right-hand side, you get your physical year allocation for 2013, 14, and then if you move to the left, you've got 14, 15. And if you move even further to the left, you've got the current year, and Lynn's done a column there for a difference. And there's a, a place here for the public, I think it's very confusing. For anybody who's not in school finance, I think it can be confusing. If you look at the first line item, which is 01 for the PRC for classroom teachers, and you take a look at the, the allotment that is there, the allotment appears to have gone up, and I think politicians can say they gave us more money for classroom teachers. Well, the fact of the matter is salaries have gone up, we have some other increases that are there, and that dollar amount for a school system doesn't, is not the number that we look at. The number that we look at is the position allotment. So from 2014, 15, from the state side of just classroom teachers, we had 318.5, and this year, we're at 316.5. So the net effect for us is we're down two positions. And that really doesn't have anything to do with the numbers of dollars that we look at, because anybody in the public would look at that and think, well, you can hire more teachers, you've got more money. Part of that is because the calculation that the state uses to calculate the dollars that are here are the average teacher salary across the state. And that's gonna vary really inside LEAs when you get there, but the real number for us to take a look at is 316.5 versus 318.5. And that's, that's fairly consistent, uh, in terms of numbers. You'll also notice that we picked up seven hours in career and technical education, or seven months of career and technical education. We can't use that type of, of dollars for anything else. It has to be used in the CTE area. So some of the, the line items that you see here come with restrictions, and we can't use money in any other area. So we, we have that, that we're having to deal with as well. On the teacher assistant side, you can see down there that, uh, dollar figures are fairly similar. Uh, the net result in the end was that we're down about 12 and a half thousand dollars at the state level for teacher assistants. So there's some that's an increase, or some there's a decrease. One decrease that we've seen over the years for the last several has been our low-well funding. And that low-well funding is a, is a complicated formula that's based on the county's ability to tax, the taxing, uh, level that they're at, and then also what the level of poverty or, or what the low-well calculation says about the property owners and that type thing. That, that number has gone down. We used to be 1.6 million, and you can see from that, we're down to 500 and, what, 17 or 71,000.
So that means our economy is getting better?
Well, according to the numbers here, it looks that way, but, you know, and, and we're not proposing that we go to anybody and say we want to raise taxes to get more low-well money, but I'm just telling you, that's what the formula is based on. And some of the smaller counties in North Carolina that have seen a, a flourish, flourishing of, of construction on- of, of construction on the water with high property have lost their low wealth money because of the, the way the formula was calculated. So, I don't know how long we'll continue to hold on to that. We're down a little bit over a million dollars. All of those things have a cumulative effect. The low wealth money, the at-risk money that we've got, which is actually a little bit of an increase there, you know, all goes into play. And, and what hits us on the local side is after you've taken care of things at the state level, what other, what other responsibilities do you have? And teacher assistance was the big one for us this year as we were looking at that. The reason why we had the teacher assistance on the table when we were talking about what our numbers looked like was because we were employing a lot more teacher assistants than the state funded us for, because over a period of years, the state funding for that has diminished, but we continue to employ those individuals. That's not, not wrong, I think it's the right thing to do, and we've had fund balance that we've been able to lean on, but you can see that the appropriation right now is not gonna allow us to continue to spend money at that rate, we cannot do it, and we've gotta look at what our cuts are. And what we would recommend is that we try to tighten the belt up even tighter than we have up to this point to salvage as much of what we've got left, and then we certainly have to be planning ahead when we look at what our proposal for budget requests are for next year.
Where's our fund balance stand before we stick our hand in the cookie jar?
Exact question I had on my mind, Matt. Thank you.
Would you explain the difference in disadvantaged and low wealth? I was a little confused.
The disadvantaged students are, are sometimes, some of it, well, some of it is based on academic need, some of it is based on poverty levels, and I can get you the breakdown of what all the criteria for that is.
Okay.
And at-risk students, the same one?
Yeah.
I think we had a question about the, the current fund balance?
For fund balance should be approximately one point eight million dollars at the beginning of this year. It's not set in stone till after the auditors pound their gavel, and they're just about done, but it should be like about one point eight six eight is where, where it should be.
One point eight what?
One million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand is the proper...
And the point with that that I wanna make to you is even if you wanna continue to operate like we have, we can't. We will not have the fund balance to do it. We cannot continue to, to go the route we've been going. We've gotta, we've gotta look at a, a number of different things, and we feel like this, this is not too late, this is not too early to do it. We've gotta go ahead and take a look at what we can do to, to try to, to tighten this as much as possible.
Are, are some of these, um, I'm, I'm like you, Mike, some of it seems almost redundant, but...
Overlapped, it seems to me, but I don't fully understand.
Are all of these programs necessary to the tune that we're doing them? Are these all required of us?
Mm-hmm.
I guess is that, that's my question. Are they all required? Or are they things that we are choosing to do? I, I'm not questioning whether or not they're right to do, I'm just questioning, are these all, cause some of these have really high price tags on them. Are, are these all required of us?
Well, th, this is money that we're drawing down from the state, and then we use that money to, to carry out whatever services or hire personnel to, to do the kinds of things that we do. We, in the past, I think we gave you a breakdown of what each one of these PRCs were and the kinds of things that are under it, and it'd probably be a good idea to get that back to you.
Yeah, otherwise, it's so vague to me to look at. I think some of it sounds like, certainly transportation stands alone, but some of the other stuff almost sounds like we're saying the same thing over and over, but for different amounts.
And we're not asking for action tonight, but we certainly didn't wanna come into this next week or whenever we do make an action item and ask you to take any action or recommendation without having a look at where we are and where we are moving forward.
I don't wanna burden you with anything, but I would just like a little better...
Well, we certainly can do that.
Spelling out a few of what...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the finance officer and superintendent come back with what they think is a conservative amount that we can live with, and we can still keep a, keep the school system above water.
And can we get a, can we get a breakdown on, on who is being paid out of local funds so we know where that money is actually going, how much of it is instructional?
And Carolyn, on that too, and for the public to know, we try to make sure that the lowest-paid teachers, those that are at the bottom of the level in terms of beginning, are paid out of local and let the state pick up the higher paid. So, the folks that are paid locally right now may not be next year if the salaries change, but we can certainly give you a look. I also wanna say anytime we're dealing with budget and, and things that involve local, the county commissioners, I think there's, there's a lot that's said during budget times about a lot of things, they have helped us in the last three or four years in terms of the funding. And if you take a look at the allocations, they, they've really helped us when we've been cut in other areas, so this is gonna be a lean year for us moving forward, and we really wanna work with them along the way and make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to what our needs are and where we're trying to go.
What's Lynn?
The state of year cuts from state, that's what the state cut money is, that, to that amount.
Lynn, was, was that a, a collection of everything added together?
That's, that's a summary. If you look at the long page at the bottom, it's, it's the, the total of the pluses and minuses of the accounts that, that we can do something with. You'll see some lines where, where there's not a plus or minus, and in those lines, we can't use that money for anything other than like transportation, you won't see a number there. Exceptional children, you won't see a number there, cause we can't do anything except that with those numbers. But all the rest of them, it's, it's a total of pluses and minuses that we receive.
So, it's the other ones that we have to try to find a way to lean up a little bit?
Right. And, and if I could say one other thing about local funding, historically, you've paid some folks out of local, and, and on a go-forward basis, that, that's gonna change a little bit. One of the big reasons, for example, is, as Dr. Fitz alluded to, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, if these folks are paid out of state funds, then we don't have to absorb that. So, what I'm going to be trying to do is moving non-salary expenses out of state into local and trade that up to the state level legitimately so that we can pay those folks for the year out of state funding, and therefore, the cost of that will legitimately go under state instead of us having to absorb it. I'm not sure how many people exactly I can do that with, but so you may see some little bit different numbers about how many people were paid locally than you have been historically.
Well, as, as Mac stated, and I agree with that, just, you know, you guys get together, come back with the most conservative plan you can. We really gotta, but I really feel we gotta come off that one point three million. But, so everybody understands what Don also was saying, even if we stayed at the five hundred thousand in fund balance, the end is within sight, because we don't have a way of saving money as far as banking money, so three years down the road, the fund balance is gone anyway. And it's just a matter of how conservative we can be and drag it on as long as we can, and just sequence this talk about not, schools shouldn't have fund balances. So, I, I think those people are gonna get their wish one day, and it may be sooner than later.
You might be right.
Right? So, either way, just come back with a plan as, as Mac was saying, and we'll just go there, right? Anything else you need to say?
Just wanna keep you informed along the way.
Sure. And we appreciate it. Okay, that's gonna carry us into action, and I think Stan, you're up on capital, budget, some updates and approvals you're asking for.
Yes, sir.
It just gets better all the time.
Good afternoon, everybody. The first one we'll go over is the fifteen sixteen, just the update on the projects y'all approved previously. Washington High School coal is under five thousand, but it has been ordered, there was a call that was defected, it was on capital budget.
Hold on a second, you're on the second.
I'm on...
Right, it's the second attachment, I guess.
Yes, sir, I explained to you what's on the list.
Yes.
And we're actually going over the...
We're not all, they're not all...
Yeah, I'm just waiting to, it's the top, he's got three attachments, it's the top line, second one, I mean, the one on the right.
Are you under? Yeah. Scroll down, you should be, you should have some attachments.
Says, uh, two thousand fifteen sixteen capital update as of ten nineteen.
That's it, you make it larger, it's right there, there you go.
And this is basically our capital project list that we're all over from month to month, and he just updated as he goes through it.
That's correct.
Highlighted, I guess, is what you're doing.
That's it, that's what me and Ms. Lisa's working. The first one that I'll go over is, is on my list, is the Washington HVAC coal.
What number is that?
Number thirty, I mean...
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five, yes, sir.
It's on page two.
There was thirty-three hundred dollars approved capital, and we spent two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven oh eight, left us a balance of one twenty-two, one thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay.
Um, the second item is the number sixty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
The Northside High School HVAC, um, the two units were approved, last meeting for eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. They come out of the non-barred br, non-barred HVAC budget, which was seventy-nine thousand nine hundred, so the math is there. I don't know how that worked out, Ms. Lisa, but a whole lot more than, I can calculate in my head, as far as the total.
Yeah, that's right, I'm close.
Um, Highway ninety-two fence.
That's Bath.
Bath Elementary.
What number is that?
Twenty.
We'll go number it next time, I promise.
Number twenty, it's on page one.
Yep, page one. Um, it's been completed. Um, the budget was approved at six thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we came under budget one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the fourth and final item...
Looks good, too.
It does, thank you, it does look very good, very, very nice job. The road fence is very, very impressive and very smooth work, and so. Um, and the last one is the walk-behind buffer, which is number seven. And that's the one that y'all approved last meeting.
It's in the school now?
It will be taken to Aurora. It's in my office, but it...
That's the one you brought to us last month to approve to one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We were over budget by one hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cent, and y'all approved that. And have any questions on that?
Certainly.
No, sir.
Okay, you wanna go to the, which one approval?
Yes, sir, for action.
Okay.
Um, of the, be on fifteen sixteen, capital, Washington High School, replacement of ninety, ninety windows. Um, we have budgeted twenty-one thousand five hundred, and the bid came in at eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen thirteen, about AAA glass here in Washington.
Why did we budget so high on that?
We took a square, a call square foot that they estimated from the glass company per window, per square foot, and we actually put it out in the bid, we came under what they actually gave us a budget number for last year, so...
Oh, okay.
I don't know if glass price went down or if we got that much competition in the bid, but it's money that we have.
Not complaining.
But it must be pretty accurate, cause the bids are all very close together.
Yes, sir, they're right there, close together.
They're all right together.
Yep, we actually can't walk around with a spreadsheet of the windows and let them physically look at the windows, the three competitors, and very close bids, so I need approval.
That's ninety windows?
Ninety windows.
Are they gonna be able to work around the school schedule when all that's going on?
Yes, basically take one out, put one in, so it's, be, be done during the daytime, that's one thing, so it's a lot of money, not have to do it.
That sealed window with the gas in it?
Yes, sir, all the fog windows.
Fog windows.
We still have a few more, these were basically the ninety ones, we looked at in the corridor.
Right.
There's still a few more in the school that we need to do, but I'll come back with you with that count, the original count, and hopefully, we can come up with that through later for the year.
Move approval, sir.
Sir.
Okay, I got a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. MHA.
MHA Works.
Um, let me find my notes right here.
Is this where we increased the size of the building?
Yes, sir, we increased the size of the building back on, um, four-three of fifteen, we had a meeting here with MHA Works, and they presented the building as they had originally designed, and then we give, just talked about the different needing and seating and the stuff, and they give us a proposal that day of twenty-two thousand dollars to redesign the building to fit the seating that we needed. Um, it was never brought before the board for official vote. Um, the board members that were present that day give them the go-ahead, but we officially need to approve the twenty-two thousand dollars for the additional design cost.
Which, does that, doesn't that carry their total cost to about ninety-five, ninety-seven? Ninety-seven thousand?
Thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
When, when did we ever approve their first price?
When...
Before you were on board.
Probably, it was way back, we went with MHA way back.
Over a year.
And then when they brought us the design for the smaller building, we had, we changed the size of the building.
Because it wouldn't hold one grade level.
No, cause I, I was here when we selected them.
Yeah.
But we were never given a price.
You're absolutely right.
We, we selected them without a price, and then, and I, I've, I've never heard of a price.
You can go back and check on that, but I was, okay, cause I, I mean, I remember the price, I don't know whether it was here presented that night to us.
The original contract was seventy-five thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cent.
Yeah, it's been since Butch was here.
And it was signed on...
I could not recall the price. I remember we said we're gonna go with them, and they get back with us with the price, and I thought, well, that was kinda strange business. Anyway.
And the board, I mean, we, we've talked about the need to increase the capacity, what we didn't say was that the, the additional service agreement amount, and we don't have that reflected anywhere, we need to make sure that's taken care of.
Lisa can look up the original and see what it says, and Butch may be right on that, but, but he was here. You, you right about that, you were here when we done that.
Yeah, I, I remember, I remember selecting them as, as the architect.
Architect.
But I don't, I don't, and we may have done it, and maybe I was asleep, I don't...
No, I doubt it, I don't think so, I don't think that was the case.
I'm just thinking about how, it's been over a year since the county commissioners put it in the budget for us to build the additional...
Yeah, it was one of the first things we did when, when we come on.
You wanna bring it back to us, maybe, Lisa? At this point, we're gonna have to prove the twenty-two thousand to get the building done, so...
Yeah, move approval, second.
Okay, any other questions, though? I don't wanna leave anybody out here. Okay, I have a motion of second on the additional part, while, and Lisa will look up the original request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Uh, I got a question, right quick before we get too far down the line. Fund balance, what's our fund balance in capital right now? Cause I know we're getting ready to have to need discuss that.
Okay, this doesn't include any of the projects that Stan talked about recently. I've put it, what I can't fund balance until the project is actually closed.
Gotcha.
Um, so what I've got is approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So what I've got is approximately $330,000.
Okay.
As we talk about Eastern Elementary and the multipurpose building, we've got a budgeted amount of $712,000. If you recall, our original request to the commissioners and our funded amount was $562,000, and then we went back to them with the concern that we've just mentioned to you all about the capacity and needing to be a little larger, and they graciously gave us an additional $150,000. When you add those two together, it's $712,000. And as a board, we all have talked about the allocation from fund balance to basically make up the difference when we got to that point. The problem, and I really appreciate what Lynn does in terms of needing firm numbers to deal with, and we've talked about, we've come up with that amount, but we've never really said what that amount was. $130,000 was a number that has been talked about. If you take a look at the bids that came in, the AR Cheston Construction Company bid is $808,605. You have to add to that a cost that you don't see on the screen here, and that's the cost of design and the architect work, which we've just said was about $97,000. So we have to add all of that together and then consider the two alternates that you have there, the LED lighting, which to me doesn't look very expensive for what you get for LED lighting, and then adjustable basketball goals at $9,800 that would go in. If you put those in, you have to add all that together to get an idea of what your total cost is going to be, and then that becomes the amount that we say we're going to allocate from fund balance. But I just wanted everybody to know what we were looking at as far as that goes.
Right. So first off, we know AR Cheston was a low bid, so that's the one to consider as far as the cost goes.
That's correct.
Is there any discussion around LED lighting and the basketball goals? Stan, is there any?
My recommendation is the LED lighting, yes, sir, we've been talking about it through all of our energy meetings and to go into LED, and I think this is our prime candidate, to give a building a test to see how the lighting works and how, the life of it. We got to test somewhere, so.
How about the basketball goals?
I think that we could put them in and save, of a bunch of money, put them in ourselves. I've looked at a few different ones on type, I think we could do it out.
Okay.
My recommendation is that we, of course, the AR Cheston was a low bid, that we go with the LED light.
I think we do the basketball goals half that price.
I do, too. These are adjustable from elementary level, which would probably be four-foot to 10-foot, but, you know, is anybody else older going to be playing basketball?
And, yeah, and I think you're right on that, because all the board members, most of our board members went down to the Hall Branch Building, which we kind of have, that's what we're building but on a smaller version. And I know that those were also quoted for that building, and the decision was made, no, do them ourselves, and they did them for, gosh, a third of the cost, a third of the cost of what they said. So you, I think you're right on that. So you're saying, let's just add $5,080 to that, plus, of course, Don, as he mentioned, the MHA design cost.
Yes, sir.
And that'd give us our total cost. So you're looking at 808, 97, and 5.
Right.
Okay, which, somebody want to add that? Well, 97 and 5 is 103, so you're looking at $911,605. And I'm not going to add that 80, y'all, just somebody forgot to pay the 80. So that's, and out of 712, so you're looking at $200,000 out of fund balance. That's what you're needing to consider approving here if you want that building.
When I wish we haven't approved the architect fee, if we've already approved that.
No, but I'm talking about the total.
Combined money for the project.
We haven't, we haven't put that, so I was just giving you, you won't have to approve that, but I'm just giving you the total cost of what they're going to have to subtract the fund balance to make the difference of.
What will be approved is AR Cheston is low bid plus the LED lighting.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and with the understanding that that's going to cost you out of fund balance, if, when we pay MHA and all, $200,000, I mean, we don't have to approve that right now, but that's, that's it. So we have a motion to second?
Ms. Lynn, we do have to approve the money tonight before we can sign the contract.
You need it separate from the AR?
Just the total amount.
Just approve the total amount, and you pay the bill, more or less.
Yeah, as long as it's somewhere in verbiage that you're incorporating another $200,000 out of fund balance for this, that's fine.
Which is that 330, and we don't know how many other jobs we might save on.
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't anticipate there being too many jobs where we're going to have a big overage, it should be optimal.
Most of my projects, I have at least one bid on so far, and everything's looking good. I don't, I, the only one I have that's over is Washington High School Circle Drive has come in, it's like $1,500 more than we have budgeted.
And here's how we can control that, because with our policy of anything over 5,000 having to come before the board, if we have any projects that come to us way over budget, all we have to do is say no.
That's right.
So it can't happen unless we let it happen. Okay, so is, would, would you be willing to put into your motion, did Butch make the motion? That approving the 808 and the 5,080 that we're allowing up to $200,000 of fund balance to be allocated? Or at least making a note of that's what you would need, correct, Lynn? Are you okay with that? Well, I'll let you decide.
Yeah.
That was a, you sure do, I'm not putting, I want your yeah to be your yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? I guess they can proceed with the building if they haven't already.
What's the schedule, Stan?
Yeah, what's the schedule?
We waiting on the contract, we had to get the contract back from our attorney, Rob Malone, so we had to have y'all's approval tonight before we did that draft, so I think everybody's sitting on ready. The company's ready to start, so just as soon as we can get the contracts out.
Groundbreaking pretty soon?
Yes, sir. But I'd say within the next three weeks, we could have them on site. Doing dirt work, there'll be a lot of dirt work brought in, so.
And Lisa, when you find out that, if Butch is correct, and I have no reason to doubt that he's not, we'll address that.
I'll give y'all a brief update on the Washington High School project, too. Washington High School Athletics is underway, they planned a four-sea month tomorrow. Everything went right this afternoon with inspection, they were supposed to have their finals under slab and the termite treatment today, and I hadn't been out there this afternoon. PS Jones Foundation's in, blocks in, and they're doing roughing in a plumbing and electrical, coming along quite well, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, Don, field trips?
We do, we have a couple there for you to take a look at, they're included as part of the attachment. And the first one is the annual FFA National Convention to Louisville, Kentucky, and it would be October the 25th through the 31st. This is a very rewarding experience for those students and the adults, I would say, that attend, so we certainly want to continue that. We also have an overnight coral group going to Western Carolina in Culloway, using a minivan, and then we have a minivan and a school car, depending on who actually goes. And then we have on December the 3rd through the 6th, overnight and out of state with a group of students going to Washington to visit several sites. This is from Washington High School, and they will be taking a train and public transportation while in DC. So I'd like to ask your consideration and approval of all three of those trips.
What is OCS students?
Occupational Course of Study.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, tell them to enjoy the train ride.
Thank you.
Take a personnel motion here?